Welcome to the September 30, 2019, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. Per the open meeting law, this meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody in the audience recording this meeting? Being none, can we stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the board, I apologize for my absence in the past two meetings. It happens that life and retirement get in the way. And so I am back, and let's see if we can't get through this tonight. We have no public comments. Nobody's walked in, so we're all set with that. No public hearings tonight or communications. So the first thing we have is an interview with Mr. Marshall for the vacancy on the Finance Committee and a potential vote tonight to appoint him. So I would ask Mr. Marshall if you would please come up and join us. I also have an email from Anne Kavanaugh tonight that says that unfortunately, I won't be able to attend tonight's meeting, but I have full faith in the decision the board will make regarding the appointment of Mr. Marshall to the Finance Committee. So she won't be here, so I'll open the questions up to members of the board. Has anybody got anything?
Just a reminder, Mr. Marshall is here previously with the board.
Yes, Mr. Marshall was here previously for the zoning board of appeals, and now he has come back to see us for the Finance Committee, which is, his term will end in June of 2022. So again, if there's any questions or comments, I welcome Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the previous interview and our process, Ms. Kavanaugh was invited in and unable to attend, but based on her note to us, I would make a motion that the board appoint Mr. Michael Marshall to the vacant seat on the Finance Committee with the term ending June 30, 2022.
Motion been made and seconded to appoint Mr. Marshall till June 30, 2022. Are there any questions or comments? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight. And be sure to go down and see our town clerk, Deb Remo, and be sure to get sworn in.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Nice to see you.
Okay. The next thing we have is an annual vote of the schedules and fees and schedule of fines per general bylaws. And Ms. Jacobson, I'll refer to you to kind of summarize that for us.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. So you have before you your annual schedule of fees and schedule of fines. Just for the public, I know the board is aware of this, but when we did the general bylaw omnibus rewrite of all of the general bylaws really a couple of years ago, the town council had recommended and town meeting approved to have a schedule of fees and fines that the board would vote on annually rather than have the fees and fines listed in each individual bylaw, because then if there were any changes by state law or anything else that we had to change, we don't have to go through the whole process through town meeting. So this is an annual vote that the board has been taking. Last year, they took the vote in early October, so they became effective October 22. If the board took a vote today, I would suggest that we just have them become effective October 22 of this year. I just didn't want to wait too long in case there were any questions or we couldn't get, for any reason, there wasn't a quorum within the next couple of weeks. So that's why it's on tonight. There are no changes since last year. All of the fees and fines primarily are established by mass general law. I believe last year they were one or two. I believe they were revisions. Two, I believe, building commissioner, and that might have even been two years ago. But there's no changes. Everything is status quo from last year.
Any questions, comments? What members? Mr. Carpenter.
I was going to ask if you could hold it over. I did not get a chance. I had a couple of questions, and I didn't note them down, so I was hoping to get a release for at least a meeting or two. I won't be at the next meeting.
Through the chair. Happy to answer questions. The only issue, I'd say, these are effective for a year from October 22. The next board meeting is October 15, and then the meeting after that is October 28. So we're going to run into just a bit of a problem on the effective date.
Yes.
Is there anything we could answer in advance for the 15th?
I didn't note them down, and they're just all numbers to be at the moment. But through the chair, to the town manager, would a motion be appropriate to extend the existing timeframe to the end of October as a half measure if nothing else?
Through the board, if you're going to wait to vote on this until October 28, I think you have to do that, because I believe they voted on annually, and I'm not 100% sure, but I believe they expire on the date that they become effective a year later. So I almost think you have to do that to hold a vote until October 28.
Well, on that note, with Mr. Carpenter, have you had a chance to speak to department heads or any of our town staff regarding these, whether these are sufficient or if they have recommended any changes?
Through the chair, town manager, I would, maybe with the employees on that, and Ed and I, in our department head meetings, starting, I don't know, probably three months ago, had just raised to all the department heads to take a look at this and ask if there were any changes. So the employees have already reviewed all of these. That process starts in the summer in anticipation of October. As I said, we do not have any changes that we're recommending at this point to the board members. What we had last year still holds. The majority of these are established by mass general law. There are a couple that are not, and those are really established by just covering the administrative costs for putting these.
Well, because they are their fees, their fines, there's been no request for anything. I would support passing this through, and so we have that on. But I'll leave a motion to the board to decide what we want to do with that. Is there anybody else got anything? Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question through you to Mr. Carpenter, if he's aware of which particular fees he has a question on or department as to not hold the entire thing up. I just, I mean, as the town manager said, most of them are dictated by mass general law. Do you know?
I don't. I didn't make a note on that. But if the board would move forward with it, I would abstain. That's perfectly acceptable to the chairman. I'm not getting excited in my opinion.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the schedule of fees for effective October 22, 2018.
And effective October 22, 2018, should that be?
19, I'm sorry.
Should that be 19? Okay.
Right, this is last year's. Through the chair, once this is voted, we change the dates on this. The courts office posts it.
Clearly, I know it's 2019. I'm just, thank you, though.
So the motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion been made, second. Is there any questions? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay, so three in favor and one abstention. Thank you. Okay.
I think you need to vote on the fines now. That was just for the fees.
Okay, yeah, that was for just the fees? Mrs. Goodrich?
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule of fines effective October 22, 2019.
Second. Okay. Any questions, comments? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain.
So three to one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, let's see. Should I move anything up?
I think that's a good question. Let me just go quick look.
Okay, then we'll move along. Then we'll move right along with the.
I think you can just go through it.
On the agenda, okay, that's great. Okay, so now we have five seats. Vote on the warrant articles held from the meeting of September 23, 2019. I was not here, so I'm going to ask which ones it could be. Article six and article 21.
Article 21's been removed.
Okay.
I've got particular article 21.
So Article six, the town meeting repurposed the CIP funds by amending Article four, May 2, 2017, annual town meeting, the Auburn School and Building Rehab, and authorized the remaining $11,360 and change in this account to be used to complete the necessary stage upgrades at the Auburn High School. Are there questions? Yes, Mr. Liliberty?
I'll just ask the question that I asked the last meeting. Through the chair, do we know what the specific renovations are being made to the stage?
Okay, yeah. We have a packet here and in there, it will be listed under Article six. And let's see. Money's noted that stage upgrades will be used to replace portions of the stage floor as required due to wear and tear, as well to upgrade the existing projector and connect it to the booth permanently rather than a temporary setup for the annual and fall special town meeting. That's what that is going to be used for.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions on that? Being none, I'm going to ask, recommend approval? Not recommend approval, defer to the petitioner or take no position?
Make a motion that we recommend approval. Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to recommend approval on warrant article number six. Is there any further questions or comments? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And Article 21? Yes, please.
If I may, Article 21 is no longer on the initial Article 21. There is an Article 21 on the warrant. It is a different Article 21 than the board was looking at last week, which they voted to hold on.
Okay, so we should all have.
So that has been removed, and now you have a new Article 21. That was removed by the planning board at a vote that they took Tuesday.
So you have in front of you the new.
Renumbered.
The renumbered warrant.
So I did have a question through the chair, if I may, on the articles specific to Article 16, which is the plastic bag reduction bylaw proposal. I wanted to know, we're getting ready today to, putting together the plan for talking to all the articles at town meeting, and it is a board-sponsored article. I didn't know if the board wanted, perhaps Mr. Liliberty, to at least introduce it to the town meeting members to say why this is on the agenda, to explain that there was a ballot question. Do you want the board to do that? Does the board want me to do that? And then it is a board-sponsored article, so we don't want to overstep and introduce an article that's the board's.
And it is a.
But we will answer any questions.
It is a board-sponsored article, and because of that, it was sent to us by Mr. Liliberty. So I am going to ask Mr. Liliberty if he's comfortable with getting up and explaining a little bit of the background of where this plastic bag came from. And if you're willing to do that, then we'll have you do that when that article comes up at town meeting.
Sure, through the chair, I'd be happy to do that. The only reason I'm a little hesitant is it's on a Tuesday, and I'll be driving back from Amherst. So if there's any traffic on the Pike, I may be a little late or not be there on time because I have to work late on Tuesdays. So I would ask that someone else also brush up on it just to be ready in case for anything comes up.
Through the chair, I'm happy to do that if you come late. And also, if the board is okay with this, Darlene Coyle, the Director of Development and Special Services, and Adam Menard, our town planner, as well as Caleb Moody, our building commissioner, are all very well aware of this. We did, so the public knows and the board is aware of this, we did have a meeting Wednesday evening last week for town meeting members to come in and hear about the bylaw warrant articles. And there were, at that point, three of them. There were two zoning and one general. This is the general bylaw. And we did answer questions. All three did a wonderful job answering the questions that came up from town meeting members, so I feel confident they can do the same thing at town meeting. But I'm happy to introduce it. I think it's important for the town meeting members to know how we got here, because not all of them may realize that there was a ballot question, that the board looked into that. You had a lot of discussion. So I'm happy to do it if you're late. And then if there's technical questions on the article itself, while it's a board-sponsored article, we can certainly respond to those questions.
Okay. And you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I absolutely appreciate all the work that Mr. Liliberty did on this, and I will support whichever direction the board goes. But I thought about this earlier, coming in tonight, about what would happen with this plastic bag being an article. The chairman's always spoken on behalf of the board at town meeting, and I was hoping, not knowing that you are going to talk about this now, to bring up that the chairman could give a brief history of how we got to where we are, including information on the hearings that we took and the fact that we heard so much from the community that the community was so split, the board did not take a position on it, but then sent it to the voters. So this is the voter's voice, and once the voters spoke on this, the board sent it to the different departments. I don't have a problem with Mr. Liliberty doing it if that's what we, if that's what we want, and I certainly would want him to be recognized if the chairman, recognized by the chairman as bringing this forward to us. But the chairman's always spoken on behalf of the board, but whichever you prefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich.
You're not uncomfortable with the chair introducing the article to us, speaking on behalf of the board? That makes more sense, but.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, all right. That's all we had on the warrant. Next we'll move on to is the common victual license, SNL Pizza, and we have the documents in front of us for the SNL Pizza doing business as Domino's, 7-Eleven South Creek Street, which is the Auburn Plaza. Do we have a representative here?
We do. My name is William Mohan. I'm a licensing and permitting consultant, and I do most of the Domino's and working this time for SNL Pizza. A young couple that have worked for Domino's for a decade and progressing to the point where they're now going to jump into the deep end of the pool and own one. And knowing the young man, young lady that are taking this on, this will not be their last, first and last franchise. They are really committed to this, and I'm sure will do a great job. We appeared before every board that called us and asked us to appear. We have the support of all of the boards. We had the support of the planning board last week and the week before, the Water and Sewer Commission. And to best of my knowledge, we have paid all fees and are ready to start moving. We have our demo contract approved, and we've been cleaning up that site and starting with that. And as of 4:00 this afternoon, we had awarded our full building permit.
Okay. Just one thing, the applicant shall work with the water department for required cross connections. Are you still working with the water department to put in whatever water line there has to be?
The water.
This is a, I'm not quite sure what the required cross connection is.
When I talked with the water department, he was talking about a backflow device.
Okay.
For each tenant in the mall.
Okay.
And I said, well, if you're talking about each tenant in the mall, you should be talking to the landlord, not to us. I've talked to the landlord. He says he's talked with the water department. There is a backflow.
Okay, great.
From the major, major pipe going into the construction.
And so you've had a chance to meet with our DCG?
Oh, yes. That's where it all started.
Terrific. Okay, is there any questions, comments from, yes, Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I believe my question is through the chairman to the town manager or possibly Ms. Coyle. I have a question regarding the waiver for the grease trap. I know that, you know, we've had several businesses in town that have been required to put this grease trap, and it's a significant cost, but a necessary cost. I always believed that it was under the Board of Health, so I'm just curious as to how we got here and how we monitor it to ensure that it doesn't require this grease trap.
I would invite Ms. Coyle up here. I would tell you that the Board of Sewer Commissioners took this vote on the waiver. It was not the recommendation of town administration to waive it, but the Board of Sewer Commissioners did take that vote to waive it. We had some concerns about ongoing monitoring and how would we watch for any potential issues, and I would turn to Mrs. Coyle for that portion of it, because I know through the Board of Health, the Board of Health had some concern as to if something were to change and that would change their operations and change their equipment, what kind of notification would come to us so that we would be aware and be able to address that.
Hi, good evening. Yes, so for the Domino's application, that did go before the sewer commissioners, and I believe that they looked at that as we met collectively for DCG and Board of Health, the Building Department, Planning, and DPW collectively. We looked at the paperwork that was submitted to us, and it was recommended that a external grease trap be installed because of the concern for grease going into the lines. That recommendation was given to DPW, and I think that they reviewed it and they determined that it was not needed.
It was given to DPW?
The sewer.
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 Okay.
Sewer department, excuse me.
Okay, gave it, okay, I misunderstood that last comment.
Through the chair, it went to the sewer. The Sewer Commission ultimately took the vote on the waiver.
If I could add to that, the water and sewer department met for the first time, I was out of the country. And in fact, we didn't even know that the meeting was taking place. And the Board of Health had in their possession, we had made all of our presentations, and here's the specs for the internal grease trap, and here's the specs for the external grease trap, and so on and so forth, and what our oven is slated to create as far as grease. The Board of Health produced a document actually on Domino's stationery that had it all spelled out, but there was also a clause in there that said, well, but if you're washing the utensils, this could create 10 times that amount of grease. And that's all water and sewer had to see, and they just calculated the grease that was going to be generated by 10 and said, we reject your request for the waiver. When I got back and I asked for a copy of that document, we found out two things, several things. First of all, the document was produced in 2011. It hadn't been accurate since about 2013. We do not have, all of our utensils at Domino's are plastic. The internal grease trap that we are putting in handles up to 250 pounds of grease every 90 days, because our grease trap is cleaned out every 90 days. The amount of grease generated by this Domino's has predicted approximately what our business is going to be here. We're looking at producing about 145 pounds of grease every 90 days. When we brought this, and we asked, so we asked for reconsideration from the Water and Sewer, and we went before the Water and Sewer and presented all this documentation. In fact, the facts and figures that they had from the first meeting were totally incorrect. They reconsidered, took a vote, and it was three to nothing with one abstention. And that was their vote to approve the waiver. We had, there are, I don't know if you have the document from Water and Sewer, but there are some, we had to produce a menu, and their only concern was what happens if your menu changes? And we told them, number one, it's not going to change. We're number one in the world with the menu we got, and we don't, you know, suddenly we're not going to, you know, it's not going to be, you know, Sarah and Luis's Italian pizzeria à la Domino's. It's going to be Domino's, and Domino's mandates this particular menu, and you've got to stick by it. And the preparations are exactly the same nationwide.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just follow up with Mrs. Coyle. So back to my original question, Ms. Coyle, who will monitor this? I know that it recommends the letter from the Sewer Commission, is that they report any change in menu, any change in equipment, and any food processing change. I'm troubled by this only because of what I've seen in the past and what I've seen other restaurants go through. How will you monitor this, if you will? Is that your role?
Thank you for asking. So just to follow up on Mr. Mohan's identification of the Board of Health information on Domino's letterhead, I'm not aware of that, so I have, I don't know what he's referring to, but I can tell you that when we met internally regarding review of this matter, we reviewed all the documents that Domino's had provided. So the documents that were provided to us were all reviewed together. So that's why the recommendation was made for the external grease trap. The monitoring of grease going into the sewer line is the responsibility of DPW Sewer Division. Obviously, any licensed food establishment, we take note, and it is a very important responsibility that we make sure that when we're doing our inspections, we're checking to make sure that we're receiving routine pump slips, making sure that, you know, if there's any problems that are, that look like they may cause some sort of grease backup, we address those. In the past few years, we've identified many issues that we have been able to, you know, find solutions for. And I think, you know, maybe you recall, our biggest concern is to make sure that the restaurants that are producing grease, that grease is somehow being contained into the proper equipment before it gets discharged into the sewer system. The reason that we want to make sure that we're looking at all those things, part of that is through a menu review, places that are producing food that, you know, has a lot of grease or using equipment that is grease, that is of grease concern. Those are the things that we look at. We also look at historically where we've had issues in the past. We want to make sure going forward with any new establishments that we are making sure we're adding any preventative grease. we're adding any preventative grease reduction equipment.
Thank you. And I don't want to hold up this hearing any longer. I will have some additional follow-up questions, probably a conversation with the Town Manager on, you know, how many appeals we've had to this type of requirement, the grease trap. But I mean, I think it's a welcomed addition to the Town of Auburn. These were just red flags for me and an appeal for a grease trap was concerning, but I will support the application.
Does anybody else got anything else? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the common virtual license for SNL Pizza Inc., provided that all applicable requirements of the state and the town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. If they had to comply with any and all of the conditions, shall invalidate the license and run it written on the board.
Second. Do we have any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Mr. Mohan, and thank you very much for coming in.
And if you know people that are looking for a job, part-time or full-time, we're hiring. Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay. Moving on, we go to item 5E, gift acceptancees. And we have none tonight. We have no proclamations or recognitions in front of us. Next, we have the Board of Slightest Meeting on October 15th and the next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, October 15th because the 14th is Columbus Day. The 15th is going to be town meeting and I am going to refer to the Town Manager to let us know what may be there for us that night. So Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair and I'll turn it over to Eddie in a moment because we were talking about potentially some bans. I don't have anything pressing that would have to be on on the 15th. We generally try to withhold any items that are of great public interest or where the public may want to participate because it happens to be right before town meeting and it's a little harder to get into the building and so we try to not put those types of items on. Anything I had would just be purely informational, letting you know upcoming meetings and events, scheduled community events that can certainly wait. So I personally don't have anything, but I believe Ed Kozinovich, CFO, was working with our Unibank Financial Advisors with regard to a ban that we have and you've got one part of that vote on there tonight, but I'm going to turn to him to answer.
So, thank you, Julie. Through the chair, there is an item that we're asking to be voted tonight, 6B, relative to the ban sale and contingent upon that vote, that's going to structure when we can go and actually get the proceeds to meet our capital needs. We originally were trying to gear this note sale for mid to late September, but for a number of reasons, we couldn't get up-to-date cash flows on some of the larger projects that we're going out for, specifically a $2.2 million sewer bans to fund various work that was authorized by town meeting. I don't know if the Board intends on meeting on the 15th. Certainly, we can bring the Town Clerk in to witness the signatures of the Board. It'd probably take about 20 minutes to take those votes and sign those notes, but I'll structure it around the Board if they want to do it later on in the month. I know there are departments looking for their money on some of these items. I indicated to them that we're either going to do a 15th vote of the Board or at the following meeting. So they are aware that it's going to be either one of those two dates and certainly I'll defer to the Board when they would like to take that vote.
I guess my question is, the 28th will be our next meeting. Is that too late for department acts?
No, I think we can wait till the 28th. I may have a conflict. I'm going to be away. I'm trying to remember if I'm going to be back for the 28th. I don't know if I am. But certainly the Clerk can come in.
You're not.
Hmm?
You're not.
I don't.
You're not.
I just don't remember what day I'm coming back. But I don't have to be present for that vote. Certainly, the Clerk and the Treasurer would have to come in and represent the town in terms of that note sale.
Okay. All right, well, I guess if something does come up, we can email members and find out if their availability for the 15th is good or let the Town Manager let us know if there's anything pending that we should meet. Otherwise, if there's, after tonight, if there's nothing, then maybe our next meeting will be on the 28th.
I will not be here for the 15th, Mr. Chairman, so I am not available.
Okay, at all, all right. Mr. Lilliberty.
I just want to throw out there that the same thing, just because the same night on a Tuesday, I work later. So there's a chance I might not be here too.
Okay, all right, then I think probably.
So the end of the month, won't we gear up?
Yeah, I think so. I think we'll be a little bit more comfortable with a little bit more attendance. Thank you. Okay, we'll come back to that, see if there's anything after tonight, if there's anything open that we have to look at. But now we'll go to the Town Manager items for Eastland Partners. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair. I've kept this on for the last three months, I believe, just to give the Board the opportunity to have any questions answered, that they have answered. As you all are aware, the last couple of meetings, the developers, Eastland Partners, came in before the Board and the Board had opportunities to ask questions. We did get several questions from a Board member that I shared those answers with all of you and I believe at the last meeting, some of the questions had been raised, just for clarification on how the state sets the rates for the rental units under affordable housing. And as the developer had explained and we sent all the paperwork, the rates are established using the MSA, which is Metropolitan Statistical Area, not the Town of Auburn. So therefore, the median income levels for Metropolitan Statistical Area are somewhat higher, probably 12% higher than the Town of Auburn itself. So therefore, the ceiling on what the income can be to be eligible is higher, but there is a benefit to that because it can also be lower. It just means it's open to more people to be able to take those units. So that is how the state sets it. I checked all the information. I talked to the state. That's absolutely how they do it. They use the HUD, Department of, US Department of Housing and Urban Development. They use their median household income statistics, which the latest ones that they're using are from 2017. That is the most current that is usable under this program. So the rates that the developer had provided to you are correct. It doesn't mean that you have to make $70,000 to be eligible. It means you cannot exceed $70,000. You could make less. I spoke to the developer, how many units could potentially be made available to those of lower income and they work with the state on that. There's a person at the state that actually is assigned to work with the developer on the lottery and the eligibility and trying to make it fair and open to as many people as possible. So that information was sent to you. I believe other information was also requested by the Board that has been sent to the Board. I also sent some additional information last week. I think I sent several emails answering certain information. I did speak again on Thursday or Friday to the project manager at DHCD, who's in charge of the LIP process, just to hear straight from her and the developer did outline it correctly. That is how the process works. But there will be plenty of opportunities for the town to be involved. So whether it's a friendly 40B or not, a so-called friendly 40B, so whether it's a friendly, which is the LIP, or a not friendly, the developer still has to go through the comprehensive permit process with the ZBA. So that is the public process whereby the ZBA and the public have the opportunity to learn more about the project and get into the details of it that are specific to the zoning board or what would be a planning board if it wasn't a comprehensive permit, which goes to the zoning board. So under both circumstances, this will go to the zoning board. The difference is, and the reason that state encourages municipalities to enter into an LIP is it gives you the opportunity to hopefully work with the developer, understand the process, ask some questions, potentially have some additional impact mitigation added in, which we're going to talk about in a minute, about potential wish list items. And it's really just to show the ZBA, when it gets to the ZBA, that the town supports the development of these housing units and that you've vetted it. And the state said that this Board has actually had more public hearings than most communities have and she thought that that was an excellent thing, that the Board has kept this on the agenda for so many months to give people the opportunity to speak and they look at that. So let's assume the Board took a vote. I believe the developer is finalizing their LIP application. Mrs. Goodrich pointed out a couple of mistakes that were in it last time, that they were addressing, and those have been fixed. They're also taking one last look at it. They're still working with the state. I know they had a meeting last week with the person who's assigned to them to look at the rental rates and the establishment of those rates. So the intent would be to have them come in on October 28th for a vote. So assuming if the Board took a vote to go forward with it, I thought you might want to know what the process is. So if the Board takes this, there would be a letter that would be signed on behalf of the Board by the Chairman of the Board, saying that the Board took this vote. We provide a court certification that the vote took place, send it down to the state. The state then takes the application, including all the attachments. They send one copy back to the municipality and you have another 30 days to comment on it. So that gives you that second chance to see the application, make sure it's what you saw the first time you voted, make sure there's no changes, no concerns. Generally, there aren't because you've already seen it and you've already voted on it. And then after that 30-day period, if there are no concerns raised by the Board on the new application, the DHCD reviews it and they will issue, they actually have to get an appraisal on the land, that's part of it, because they're doing, financial piece is involved as well. So they get an appraisal and that takes place between the developer and DHCD. Then DHCD would issue a project eligibility letter. That means they've gone through the entire application and they determine that they've met all the criteria under the state LIP program and the Chapter 40B requirements that are state, that the state has to look at and monitor. After that, they set up a letter, excuse me, a meeting onsite with the developer and members of the municipality, whether, you know, a member of the Board wanted to go, certainly Town Administration, we would be present at that meeting, most likely, I would say, well, we'll have to see who's attending the meeting to see what the focus is. And then after that, the community, the developer would take their project eligibility letter and apply to the ZBA for a comprehensive permit. And that starts that next whole public process for a comprehensive permit. So they go through the comprehensive permit process. After that, assuming that they get their comprehensive permit, then they record the comprehensive permit approval with the Registry of Deeds. Then the state comes up and provides a boil-plate regulatory agreement that the attorneys work out to be specific to the project. And the regulatory agreement really just outlines all of the things that are already in the application, similar to a development agreement. And following that, the Affirmed Fair Housing Marketing Plan and Tenant Selection Lottery Plan are both reviewed. They're part of the application, so they're already in there now and that review starts going on. And that's the point where one of the Board members had asked about local preference. So the local preference can be determined at that time. The Board, when they meet with the developer on the 20th, may want to ask for the maximum local preference that's allowed under the law, which I think is, I'm not 100% sure, I think it's 70% of the units can, in the first go-around, be given local preference in a lottery. There's a whole regulatory process to that lottery. But the Board, through an LIP, has the ability to ask the developer to give as much preference as possible.
Now, is there a deadline that they are looking for? You're saying the 28th, they could possibly come in if they're ready or will it be later than that?
If they're ready, they'll come in on the 28th.
Okay.
If not, it would be probably the very next meeting. They're striving to be here on the 28th.
Okay. It looks like there's going to be plenty of informational hearings as this whole process goes along. I'd hate to burn our bridge and have them come back and ask more questions here prior to this process starting through because I think a lot more questions will be answered as far as we go when that process starts. So again, I'd hate to burn our bridge and have them come back in here and ask, you know, repetitive questions and get more information than we've already had. So as the process goes along, I'm sure we'll probably all have questions, but the Zoning Board of Appeals will make that available to us so that we can ask those questions and make it known that they're going to have that meeting so we can ask questions if we need to be.
And looking at the information I sent to Board the other day, just to verify, so the portion of the lottery that occurs first is the local preference and it's, local preference covers town employees as well as residents. That's what the state defines as local precedence. And during that lottery, there is a maximum 70% set aside for the first units assigned to go to town employees and residents, should there be enough applicants that meet the criteria to fulfill that. And the developer has indicated that as part of this LIP, they can ask DHCD along with the town to see if they would consider a higher percentage of the units to be set aside than 70, but that is a specific request that has to go to DHCD without that request at 70.
If I may, and that's 70%, that's 70% of the affordable units, which are 25% of the 320.
Correct.
If I may ask one question.
Yes, please.
Rather than me just refreshing my memory, how is the affordable rate set?
The affordable rate is set based on no more than 80% of median of the MSA in which the project's located.
Okay, so it's the median, so that's what I.
Median household income.
Right, so that's what I believed.
Set by HUD.
So I know that you said by, you know, it opened it up to more people having the median income raised, but I still feel, I feel very strongly about this, you know that. You may include more people at a higher income level, but if you're not looking at our 72,700 median income level, our residents are not going to be able to afford affordable housing. It's, I'm sure that the difference of 72,000 and 97,000 is more than 12%. It's a significant difference and I'm just, I'm just really struggling with this median income and trying to figure out how we can help Auburn residents best because out of 320 units, again, doing the math, we could potentially have anywhere from four to 16 units go to Auburn residents and have an impact of 320 apartments.
Through the chair, I did talk to the developer after you raised that at the last meeting and, you know, the state sets the 80%, not the developer. So that is set by DHCD. The developer is certainly willing to work with DHCD to see if they could accept a lower level, but I read through all of their documentation, well, I also called the state, and 80% is the level they set. The next level down is, I believe, a 50% income level and that falls under different criteria for development. So this one, it is a state set 80%, not the developer, but the developer is aware of your concern because you had raised it last time and certainly willing to have that conversation with the state to see if there's anything they can do to accept a lower income bracket. That's what we talked about last week, that that will be determined by the state.
Okay, and along with the lines of Mrs. Goodrich's comments, is there any way that you, out of your office, can contact Eastland Partners and ask that question to see if they have talked to the state?
Through the chair, I did. I had that conversation.
Okay, so you.
I had that conversation after the last meeting.
Okay.
And then I myself talked to the state as well.
Okay.
And raised this as a potential, not concern more, but just question as to whether it was possible to get a lower income. So persons can apply if they don't meet that level.
I guess what my question was, it's been asked, but can we, some other point as the process goes along, ask again and keep it in the front?
Yes, I am suggesting that on the 28th or whenever the Board, the Eastland Partners comes back to the Board, that if that's what the Board as a whole would like to request, that they were certainly amenable to going back to the state and seeing if something like that could be done.
Okay.
But again, they have to get authority from the state because it's set by the state.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else got anything else? Okay, Mr. Coppeta?
Just, are we on the mitigation items or are we not?
Through the chair, the so-called wish list is part of this item discussion on the, this whole item is just to discuss any additional questions, to see if there's anything else that the Board needs to be aware of. I did include in your packets a wish list for discussion with Eastland Partners that has been developed over several months now amongst Town Administration, Department Heads, and the School Administration. And I know Dr. Marion Brunel has had conversations with the School Committee. When we look at this list, I just want to remind the Board members that Eastland Partners just asked Administration for a so-called wish list of what types of things do we prioritize in the town that we feel are going to be needed as a result of this project or the things that could benefit the residents of the community, including the residents who live at the reserves at Ashford. So this list has been developed. We fully recognize some of these requests are likely not to be funded, but we would be remiss if we didn't show them that there's a potential need for some of these items. So you can see the items arranged. So you can see the items range from very small items to very large items. We've checked with other communities to see what they have done, and the majority of communities that work on an LIP end up working with the developer to secure conservation restrictions on the land that's not utilized for the development, as well as walking trails and sometimes new playgrounds or open space in the area of the project. But we did go beyond that and put additional items just for conversation with Eastland. Ed and I had one initial meeting just to see if we were on the right track, and we told them we wanted to come to the board with this list. Is this what they were asking us to do? And they did say this is what they were asking us to do. I think they're looking for opportunities to enhance the community and potentially sponsor some community-type events, as well as to address some of the impacts. Keeping in mind, we can't put on a list like this staffing needs or staffing requests, because that is supposed to come from the tax revenues that the project generates. So ongoing operations are supposed to be funded through your tax revenue. So this is something that's over and above what we would anticipate does, you use your tax dollars to cover the costs that benefit that community, which would be your public safety, your public works, all of your other type costs. So we're trying to take a look at what the staffing is. We certainly have a handle on what we think our needs are going to be, but until this project is actually underway and we see how old the schoolchildren are that move in, how many families move in, it, those are still three years away.
Mr. Carpenter?
So I do have some suggestions, because I went through it and I thought, some of these, I have more questions through you, Mr. Chairman, I have a few, so if that's okay. Under roadway, right at the top of the list, roadway improvements, roadway reclamation and paving. Just a general question, is there any chance, I know the roads are very narrow over there, but people do like to walk in their neighborhoods, so I wasn't sure if there would be any opportunity for us to reapportion some of this money to include some sidewalks in that area, especially we're adding a significant amount of traffic. They may not necessarily go to the light, they may choose to go a different way. So that was something I was, I was concerned about. I wasn't really thinking big-ticket items like we have. Certainly, you can present them, I'm not necessarily in agreement with, with some of these. Under the walking biking trails connecting development to middle school, I thought that was a great idea. There is also a path, and at one point when we had a natural resource planning committee, before it was the open space committee, there was a identified hope of the town to connect that trail all the way through to Connecticut. So I didn't know if that would be something that maybe they could do. They're going to have to put a light in, they've got 600 between Oxford and Auburn, they've got 600-plus units. You know, I know intersections and lights are not cheap, so this may be stretching it even further, but it would be nice if we could achieve that goal from many years ago. My only other one, well, two other ones, I'm sorry. Under the track replacement, I know the town is applying for an ADA grant to try and get our fields into compliance with whatever the ADA is presently, and I was wondering if there'd be some consideration to, if we don't get the grant, to actually ask if they would fund a study? And if we're lucky enough to get a grant, if they would repurpose this money, if they're amenable, to actually trying to achieve or go towards making our parks more ADA compliant. So that was another item I had. Discharge piping for Auburn portable pumps, I wasn't quite sure what that was, I'll be honest. And I was thinking of potentially tying in, you have a summer concert series, I thought, Memorial Day Parade, or even the 4th of July, we're both maybe repurposing that money so that we can do a little more on those events. Obviously, those need to be identified, those needs need to be identified, but those were my suggestions for consideration and my thoughts on it. But thank you for the work that went into it, I appreciate it.
Through the chair, happy to speak to DPW director, Bill Coyle, on the roadway reclamation. Our, I know Bill's thought on this was that after the project was done, there'd be some reconstruction that would need to happen, because they do have the right to travel over these roads with construction equipment, and it does cause some, has some impacts. As far as sidewalks, you know, it's always a good thing to have sidewalks, again, I would defer to Bill Coyle as to what the right-ofways are in that area and if there are actually room for sidewalks, depending on the right-ofways. But it's certainly something we can ask about. The walking trails, again, we have always promoted walking trails, we thought it'd be a great thing. Dr. Brunel and the school committee thought it would be, it was a great idea to tie it in with the middle school and to be able to do some things with the middle school students. We can certainly ask them what their intention is with Oxford, and if Oxford is looking at something similar and there could be a connection. We had identified this area many years ago as one of the priority areas that could have some nice conservation in walking trail areas, so we can certainly talk to them about that. The track replacement, again, that's from the school committee. The ADA study that we're applying for is to give us funding, as you know, to do a study for all of our parks and town buildings. That application is due, I think, October 8th, so we probably won't know whether we're getting that grant in time for this, although we might, we really don't know how quick the state is. We applied for the EMPG grant last week after the board told us that we could go ahead and apply for Code Red, and we were told today that we got the grant. So that was a really quick turnaround. So I don't know what the ADA grant turnaround is going to be, but we can certainly keep that in mind. It's always a good idea to be looking for alternate funds. The last one, like I mentioned, we, we mentioned some smaller, what I call smaller ticket items to the developer to see if they consider it. We can certainly add on Memorial Day Parade and 4th of July.
I would just say repurpose, I wouldn't, I don't want to add to items, I would just say if we can potentially repurpose it, I just, I know we have the track programmed into our CIP, and where we have this unanticipated or perhaps anticipated need to improve our ADA compliance, it just seemed to me that that would be a more appropriate thing, and it would, as to your point, we're trying to help the whole community, that's not only helping the community, but it's also expanding those within the community who can use some of our parks. So that, that's why I, I felt it might be a good idea to try and piggyback on, hopefully we get the grant, but if we don't, you know, if we can present it to them in a two-step.
Yeah, through the chair, can I just ask for clarification, just because I'm not sure I understood, you're looking to repurpose, not add to the list, but-
Correct, I would not ask them for additional funds, I would say-
Repurpose which?
I was 9,200, which is discharge, the 125 for the track replacement, perhaps the walking trail, depending on what is more urgent and the equipment needs, you might want to-
Okay, I see what you're saying. Through the chair, this, I will be honest, there's, we're not expecting to get this entire list, so by adding to it, that's not adding to our ask, we're presenting this list and saying, what pieces of this list are you willing to work with us on, recognizing it's not going to be the whole list. We put this list together because we asked all the department heads what the impacts were. I do want to explain the communication tower repeater system, because there is an article on the warrant, as you know, for enhanced communications for police radio, because we have some concerns. The long-term plan for that is going to be about $200,000 to get a tower up there to get better service. And we thought many of the residents will be coming from that area, so it was an opportunity to tie that into a need that's going to be enhanced because of the addition of this project. But we don't expect that we would get more than a couple of these items, it was just our complete wish list. So I wouldn't be concerned about adding something else small like that to it. I think just the idea of the conversation with them is, are you willing to help us with some of our community events? And then we can decide what community events those are.
I don't know if we need a motion. I don't know if anybody else has something, Mr. Chairman, so I don't certainly want to-
A motion on?
To include those on our wish list, the town wish list.
Is that something that-
It's up to the board, if you want to do that, then we'll include it, and when we have a meeting. If not, it's just something, literally, we're not, we're just going to be having this conversation with the developer.
Okay, so I think the conversations go along, if they look amenable to looking at a few things, then maybe at some point down the road, we should ask about specific things instead of just, you know, one thing here or there. But you're right, there'd be more discussions, so I don't think a motion right now, I think, would be in place. I think that, you know what, we've got some additional suggestions here to bring the vote and take a look at.
We'll share all of them, take a look and see what their comments are.
And then come back to us at some point down the road.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make a motion that they be included, so that it's official vote of the board, that these be included. They may never be funded, but I think they're, they're along the lines of what we're talking about.
So the motion been made to make the suggestions that has come forward in discussion tonight. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to hear, I heard the conversation, I would like to hear the succinct request, please.
Succinct?
Yes.
Have you met me?
I was actually looking at the town manager.
This is what I have, so to add to the wish list, the potential widening of the roadways that are identified on here and looking at whether sidewalks could be included, adding a potential for connection for walking and or hiking trails through the town of Oxford to connect with the development side on the, on the side of Oxford. The, and this is where I still, still trying to connect here, but we're not replacing the track replacement request, because that came from the school committee, so I want to keep that on there. But in addition to that, asking the potentially to fund an ADA study if we don't get our grant, and I don't know when that will be, and that study is about $63,000, and to add in the potential for looking at expansion of the budget for the Memorial Day Parade and the Independence Day event.
If we do get the grant to have, I would say add, I didn't understand what this was about, so I guess, I would say if we do get the grant to provide money to outfit a field ADA compliant, or give money towards our hope to have our fields ADA compliant.
Okay, so the grant that we're applying for now is to do a study to determine what the ADA needs are. Once that, it's called a transition plan, once the transition plan is developed, which takes about a year to two years, once that's developed, then we're eligible for future funding at the state for implementation of any of the strategies identified in the ADA transition plan. So that is likely going to be passed this point, just because of the deadlines for all of that. So now that I see what you're saying, there is no grant right now that we're eligible for to increase ADA compliance, but it could be potentially included as part of the tractor field.
I think the suggestion going forward would be sufficient, but has been a motion made, seconded, is there any further discussion?
Just still in the discussion. So I'll support the motion to include these items, and this has just come to us as a wish list, so, so yes, I'll support including these, but I would like to have the opportunity to at least have a discussion with the town manager, as well as bring it back to us, because I want to be, I want to be clear on what we're making priorities and what, what we're asking for with the understanding that they're not going to, they're not going to provide everything here, so I want to have a better understanding from town administration, from department heads, from the impact of the project, what the priority should be.
Through the chair, I can tell you, we're pretty certain, we've had several meetings on this, as far as priorities, again, this is a list from all the department heads, if we were to go beyond. I think the two priorities that we really need to focus on immediately would be the post-construction roadway improvements, because there will be a cost to repair the roads, assuming that there's all this construction. But the most important one would likely be the discharge piping and the sewer study that is going to be required. So the developer is working with the town of Oxford to develop another 320 units that are townhouse units. They would be seeking to, Oxford was seeking to amend their agreement with Auburn to handle the sewer discharge in Auburn's systems. Our systems can't handle it. So we reached out and got a quote a couple of weeks ago from our consultant to do a study to determine what types of upgrades we would have to make to our sewer system so that both the Oxford project and the Auburn project can go through. And the developers already agreed to fund that study, because they recognize that there has to be improvements that are made. Once that study is done, there may be further improvements that are made, so to your point, that's a priority, because this project won't be able to move forward without upgrades to the sewer system. The current sewer system does not have the capacity of our pumping stations to handle what's going to come out of these projects. So that is our priority. We're hoping that beyond that, we could look at some of these other things. I think the equipment is a wish list, and it's nice to ask, but it's not a priority, the sewer is a priority, and the roadway improvements are a priority.
Okay, Mr. Carpenter?
I would just say I'm absolutely opposed to accepting any more sewage from the town of Oxford. If they're going to take the profit, they need to start doing something for themselves. We've already given them free rein with their second new high school in 40 years. I am not in favor of us taking, if this is, if this is something for our residents to improve in that area, I'm happy to support that, but I am not in favor of supporting, taking solid waste from Oxford.
Okay, thank you, that's above and beyond what the, I guess, the talk of what we've got here, but the motion's on the floor for, made and seconded for those additional items that have been discussed here tonight. Again, I think that the report, the suggestions have been recorded, and I don't think we have to go forward with the motion, but the motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Through the chair, I do have a question.
Yes, please.
Just, I want to make sure I'm understanding what Mrs. Goodrich wants town administration to do. Do you want us to bring Eastland Partners back here for a discussion on this prior to the board taking a vote on whether to enter into the LIP? Was that?
This is a significant project.
No, I'm just making, I just want to make sure-
I want to have a sense from them of what they're willing to do. I mean, this is, this is a big ask, I'm not confident with how much they would be willing to do.
No, and we're not asking for all of this, just to be clear, this was just a wish list that we're bringing to the board to try to work out what priorities we would want to ask for, because clearly, we can't ask for all of them. But I just want to be clear, we, they're absolutely willing to come back and talk to the board, I just want to get the dates right, because right now, we're talking about an October 28th potential vote, but that may be premature, because if you want to have a discussion with them on October 28th about this, I don't know that you want to rush and take the vote the same night.
Yep, okay.
Correct, is that my understanding?
Well, it's up to the rest of the board. I just, this is a significant project, I don't, you know, I don't feel that a couple weeks is, is going to, they will move ahead with their project, it will either be a friendly or an unfriendly 40B. I appreciate the work that the town manager has done with Eastland Partners, but there's always something, no, including what Mr. Carpenter just pointed out about the sewage from Oxford. I just, I, I, at the very least, want to have a conversation with the town manager to review some of this stuff.
I don't have a problem, I just think that's not what we're talking about on the motion. If we want a separate motion, I happily discuss that, but this is just on the wish list, the mitigation plan.
You're, you're talking about the residents and occupation of those buildings. The number of people that the town would allow, is that what you're questioning, or you're questioning the wish list?
No, I was addressing the wish, the wish list.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was, I was talking about the wish list and the issues that Mr. Carpenter just what made, as well as having, wanting to have a better understanding of, for lack of better word, and we certainly don't want to discuss it here, I'd like to have a conversation with the town manager about strategy, the town's strategy to, to get this.
To be clear, we're only voting on adding to the wish list, we're not talking about asking them to come in again, we're just talking about that was what the motion was for. So I think that's where we kind of get off track when we, when we mix-
That's why I was going to ask, Sharon, have you got the motion there?
I didn't get everything due, I guess.
I can certainly give you my notes.
No, that's not- No, that's not-
No, that was the walking trails because that, the sewer issue was already identified on here. That's completely separate. That's an issue that has to be looked at regardless of-
Okay. Yeah. Addition to fund ADA if we don't get the grant and potential additional expansion of budget for Memorial Day Parade.
Okay. You've all heard the motion has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I am opposed. So it's three to one.
Did you want to make a motion about having them in or?
No, I'll let the town manager and the chairman set the agenda on that.
Okay.
And participate in votes as they come.
Okay. The next we have then is 6B, the vote on the maximum useful life of equipment for the upcoming van sale. And Eddie, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, this is a vote that the board takes annually as a result of the authorizations that are passed by our town meeting members. Bond council reviews the items that are passed. They send us a requirements letter, and part of the requirements letter determines how we structure our debt based upon the life expectancy of the equipment that has been authorized under those borrowings. So certainly, these items are listed in the vote based upon the maximum useful life. In the vote, they will structure the debt accordingly. Some debt we retire early for those items that have a useful life on the lower side, and the debt is structured on those items that have a longer useful life. So this is, this is something that we bring before the board every year, and this will now allow us to go out and structure up our bond sale that we're going to bring back to you on the 28th of October.
Okay. Is there a motion? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be processed, to be financed with the proceeds of the $387,000 portion of the $842,000 capital improvement bonds authorized by the vote of the town passed May 7, 2019, Article IV, and the portion of the $1,200,000 roadway improvement bonds allocated for the purchase of streetlights authorized by the vote of the town passed May 7, 2019, Article 26th, is hereby determined pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subset 1, to be as follows. Town alarm upgrade, $10,000, maximum useful life, 10 years. Electronic fingerprint system, $28,000, maximum useful life, 10 years. A one-ton dump truck with plow, $34,000, with a maximum useful life of 10 years. Lemansky bleachers, $10,000, with a maximum useful life of 10 years. The school system-wide tech and furniture, $305,000, with a maximum useful life of 10 years. And roadway streetlights in the amount of $900,000 for maximum useful life of 15 years.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further comments or questions? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain, Mr. Chairman.
You are going to abstain?
On that particular vote, yes, sir.
Okay. So three yeses and one abstention. The next we have tabled items. We don't have any. Board of Selectman number items. Just as a prelude to what we've got here in front of us, one is to discuss amending warrant, Article 16, and the other one is to establish a subcommittee for the plastic bag reduction law for the 2020 annual town meeting. However, these two are almost a moot point. Both of them are on the warrant for the meeting for the fall, and I don't know how much discussion we could do. I think it's probably the best thing we could do is to send it to the town meeting. If any other changes or anything has to be made, then it has to be made at a town meeting because it has already been printed and sent to them, the town meeting members. On that note, Mr. Carpenter?
We do have the option, Mr. Chairman, as you know, as a town meeting member, to amend on the floor. So at last meeting, I had several items that I think should be included in this, which we are sponsoring, even though we didn't get it and we're sponsoring it. But the nine months allows us to move the effective date of the bylaw past the annual town meeting so we can work on, if the board so chooses, some of the revisions that I mentioned, and then we can work with the business community to make sure, rather than have it effective in six months and then come back in annual town meeting and say, oh, we know that you spent all this money planning for this, but we would like to do something slightly different. So that is my motivation, is to just push the effective date and ask that we amend our article, our warrant article on town meeting floor from six months to nine months.
I'm going to refer to the town manager on what is our ability to do that?
My understanding from town council of the process is that a motion would have to be made by a town meeting member to amend an item on the floor. So it can't be done prior to that because it's already been mailed. It's already been approved by this board as, as it was approved last week. The discussion last week on some recommended changes were not voted. So this board has already made the decision, and the warrant was mailed today.
Again.
So it can be done on the floor by a town meeting member. I don't believe it can be done, according to town council, it couldn't be done by a board of selectmen unless, and it has to be done by a town member.
Again, my early comments, it's a moot point that we do this, and whatever work has got to be done on those bylaws or suggestive recommendations or changes, town meeting floor, not here. Again, on discussion and potential vote to establish a subcommittee to review and suggest revisions to the proposed plastic bag reduction bylaw for the 2020 annual town meeting. This, again, is on the town meeting for the fall, and if there's going to be any further review or suggestions for the 2020 annual that we were looking at the fall, it's on the, it's on the warrant for the fall. So again, anything would have to come to discussion in the town meeting floor in order to make any changes.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
We can certainly communicate our desires to the town moderator that we took a vote, that we would ask a town meeting member, as has been done any number of times in the time that I served in town meeting, that something was imperfect, something needed to be changed. We could ask the moderator to make or ask a town meeting member to change a bylaw. I'm asking for six months to nine months, and I do think that we need to review it. And I certainly don't want to be reviewing it while business and town staff is preparing their education plan and everything else, and we're going gangbusters so that they can comply with the bylaw that may or may not be revised. So, I mean, it's up to the board what they want to do. I wasn't willing to let my thoughts go, so I figured, hey, this is a good idea.
It is extraordinary that we asked the town moderator to ask a member of town meeting to change this without any discussion, and I don't think there's a possibility of that happening. So I think that we have it in front of us with the, with the warrant, and I think that discussion come forward and whatever discussion there is, bring those out as talking points and discuss it, and maybe there will be somebody at town meeting to do that. But again, it's, I'll leave it up to the board, and you've heard the discussion, what you want to do with this. So we'll go back to Board of Selectman member items number 8A and the warrant Article 16. Again, that'll be something to go to town meeting with.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we ask, that the board ask the town moderator to make an amendment to Article 16 to change the effective date, which is the last line, from six months to nine months. That would be my motion.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Okay. Mr. LaLibby?
So I've talked to Mr. Carpenter about this. The only concern that I had with pushing it back and then following this path is amending the bylaw while it's trying to be implemented. So editing it while the business community is already trying to grapple with it. That said, I can certainly see changes being made to the bylaw, so I'm not completely against this course, but I just wanted to throw that concern out there before we move forward.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. It's a two-to-two vote. It fails.
Okay.
To item 8B, discussion and potential vote to establish a subcommittee to review and suggest revisions to the proposed plastic bag reduction bylaw for the 2020 annual town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we do so.
Okay. Is there a second? Being no second, we move on.
Very good.
Are there any public comments tonight? We have minutes. We have no minutes tonight.
Not tonight, we don't.
I was just digging through my papers here to see, be sure if I had them or not. And again, is there anything from board members?
I'd make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Before we do that, thank you, town manager.
I'm good, thank you.
Assistant town manager. Anything tonight? And you have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night.